I'm not sure I got here late. Um, there's no speakers downstairs. They told us to wait down there. We don't know what's going on. We don't know what's been said. Um, so I'm just going to speak on what I think is so abusive. And that is also the ordinance that I was passed regarding, um, regarding the tenants law. California already protects tenants. Why does somebody who parks up to invest money that you don't have into adding more work to the city? Why, why did this come about? How can we go back in time and take it away? Because that is not right. That is, that ordinance should have never have passed. Whoever passed it, and you know what? And I blame myself for not being here and for not being where I should be like everybody else should be. Because we left everything in your hands. We trusted you. You've been here for how many years? For how many terms? And we just feel so defrauded by you. Because you took, you're taking all this for granted. And people that should be in your seats should actually be people that are working for the community. You have to take from the community. You guys are taking from our community?
Yes.
And you're making all of the owners pay? We have no money. We have no more money. How are we gonna start paying out for ordinance? For rent settlements that we have more money for? Like, that makes no sense. Everything's going off, we understand. But you know what? Tenants are already tenants. Why does the city need another tenant? Because they want revenue. They want money. They want everybody in the city at their parks to pay more money. You're already, they're already paying business licenses. Everybody that owns, that has purpose, that has whatever, they have business licenses that they're paying for. That should be more than enough. You guys need to stop, stop the greed, guys. Really stop the greed. And if you're not here because you want home to park to thrive, they need to be. They need to be there.
Thank you for your comment. Well, Francisco, thank you.
Good evening. Buenas noches a todos. Uh, councilmembers, mayor, vice mayor. My parents stayed here when I was three years old. This is my home. Illegal immigrant, now a US citizen. You guys are public service. You're working for us.
Yes.
And I'm not judging you guys. I'm not convicting you guys of anything. I don't know. I don't have any evidence. But if this comes to be true, you guys need to be in jail. You guys do need to pay the consequences.
Yes.
I committed a crime once and I paid my dues for it. I paid my own lawyer. I couldn't have somebody pay for it. And who's gonna make us homeowners hold again? How are we gonna get that allegedly money missing that nobody's accounting for? Who's gonna make us hope? How are we gonna get that money back? If, it's true, like they said, we're upset. How come no one tested the ground before they broke? There's steps. I'm not even educated. I don't have a degree. But I know somebody has to go test the ground before you dig, before you break ground. I know that much. I mean, who is it? City engineer, manager, I don't know. Even I know that much. So if it's not true, hopefully you guys are innocent. I don't know. I'm not judging you guys, but if you're guilty, I hope you spend the rest of your life in jail.
We have some comments that we received, but at this time, with your permission, I'd like to open it up to make sure, um, if there are any individuals that arrived late that didn't enter the lot of park.
Yes.
Uh, those of you in the general public, if you would like to make public comment, I'd like for you to just bring them up. So we're gonna bring them up one at a time. Yes, yes, I'll go ahead. So those who have stood up, if you could please bring your way here, we'll start with you. And then we will go back to some, uh, we have some votes downstairs. We'll keep going up to them. Your time will begin when you begin speaking.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for being here. Um, citizens and bench councilmembers, we give us the time to speak, you guys. Um, I have a lot of questions and comments and comments that I would hope that you guys will answer, me and the public. I would like to know. Uh, beginning with the lady, Ms. Castillo here. I don't know what she got removed. What was the reason why she got removed? She didn't get a seat. She did not. Why was she placed in the ballot for Daniel West? We wasted a lot of money. Uh, we could have had a different candidate up there. Only you guys will be able to answer that, obviously. Also, um, as far as the pool, uh, what's gonna happen next? We would like to know. Obviously, this fourteen million, eighty million, I don't know, there were five or numbers. Where is that money at? And what's gonna happen with the pool? Is it gonna be on hold until your next investigation is over or something? I would like to know. Also, if the pool was being built, why wasn't there testing done prior to the pool being built? I'm gonna, I'm gonna build something in my house. You guys are gonna have me tested.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. So, um, as far as the sixteen year term that you guys put on the ballot, why was that put on? I think that's way too many years for a term member, a councilmember to serve. Sixteen years, that's way too much time. Two terms, max. Also, uh, this rotating mayor, that shouldn't have. It should be one mayor, four councilmembers. That's it. When I'm doing all my work, I'll meet your councilmember in two years and then I'll make you. That's, that shouldn't happen. Awesome. If you remove this lady, this lady should be replaced by a new election.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, um, I would also like to know how long have the city clerks, the, uh, the chief, the all the respect? How long have they been here? All the clerks, they need to be rotated out. Also, you guys put the parking ballot on the, um, and the people voted for it. It was a very small, narrow way. I would like to know what you guys gonna do with that money? What are you guys gonna do with the money? You guys gonna connect with the rent control? I would like to know that too. So, um, we, I want answers and I think the people, the people here want answers. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. I hope you answer my questions.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Elena Gomez. Y este, yo, yo solamente quiero pedirle a las personas que están aquí que se dice muchas cosas de todas las personas que están aquí representando. Pero este, yo sé muchas cosas que los demás gentes no saben. Y aquí solamente les quiero decir a todos la comunidad que me da mucho gusto que hoy estén todos aquí. Pero necesitamos informarnos más y venir a las juntas para saber exactamente qué es lo que está pasando. Entonces, también se habla mucho de corrupción, de muchas cosas, pero necesitamos estar enterados todo realmente lo que está pasando para poder hablar. Porque cuando nosotros hagamos un trabajo para la comunidad, yo sé de ellos que han hecho muchas cosas buenas también. Nadie está hablando de eso. Entonces, ¿qué pasó? Ahora está lleno aquí, pero siempre en las juntas no está lleno nunca. Entonces, ¿qué pasa? Solamente cuando salen las noticias, la gente venimos. No es así. Tenemos que venir a las juntas para enterarnos de qué es lo que está pasando. Entonces, yo como comunidad de tanto, tengo treinta y cinco años de vivienda aquí, sí he visto muchos cambios. Yo sé que siempre está cambiando todo. Yo estoy agradecido por ustedes también de varias cosas, pero también sin, por favor, despidos, que sean más transparentes en sus acciones que hagan. Y pues, es todo lo que yo quisiera decir esa tarde. Y a la comunidad, que vengan más a las juntas, porque nunca hay mucha gente como hoy. Porque como había hoy prensa y todo, entonces, para que se entiende lo que está pasando. Y también quiero preguntar ya y decir lo último. Decir me gustaría, este, saber qué va a pasar con la señorita, uh, Cassius. Gracias.
If we could stay as quiet as possible, so we, we respect each public speaker's opportunity, guys. We want everybody to be able to have an opportunity to say their piece, so we can hear their voice clearly. Si, por favor, pueden mantener silencio en lo que están hablando, los que están comentando, para respetar lo que están tratando de decir. Muchas gracias, guys. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nancy Gobernelli. Y en mi opinión, este, yo quiero saber, um, detalles que a veces sabemos por plática de otras personas. Porque cualquier construcción, cualquier proyecto que quieren hacer aquí cuesta millones más que un finales mucho más grandes. Y aquí todo eso, todo ese dinero nos está haciendo falta a toda la comunidad, para otras cosas. Yo no sé si ustedes, mi respeto para ustedes, pero a veces pienso que ustedes son como mayonetas y alguien mal los está moviendo, ¿ok? Porque corrupción, la corrupción es muy grande para estas situaciones más duras. No nada más que ustedes considero que ustedes están movidos por otros peces más grandes. Y si es así, pues nos invitamos ustedes a nosotros. Pero ustedes deben de hablar si quieres, los hablaré claro. Gracias.
Gracias por su comentario.
Good evening, councilmembers and residents of New York. My name is Rebecca Lopez. Um, and I'm here tonight as a mother, a taxpayer, and a resident who is outraged by the corruption that has taken place in my city. As a young daughter, and like every parent here, I want her to grow up in a community that is safe, honest, and full of opportunities. But how can I teach her about integrity when the very people who are supposed to serve us electively receive a powerful personal gain? We now know that members of this council have been proven ill bit and so are sponsors, including millions of cash to your social. And what do we have to show for it? A so-called aquatic center, a water complex that has been in the works for years, but doesn't exist? Millions of dollars spent. Not a single child in our city has been able to swim in that complex. But the money keeps flowing into the pockets of insiders. This isn't just mismanagement, it's that. It's a betrayal of trust and has repercussions. That money could have gone to our schools, our parks, our public safety, and sent it disappearing to backdoor deals while our community is left with urban promises. Renting to park is not a business opportunity for drug politicians. It is a home for hardworking families and to serve better. We demand answers. We demand accountability. And we demand immediate actions from those who found well, not just in this chamber, but under the weight of law. So the listeners in this room, who have nothing to hide, prove it. Stop the cover-ups, open the books. And to those who think they can keep getting away with this, hear me clearly. We are, uh, we are walking. We are angry and we will not settle until justice is served. I refuse to let my daughter grow up believing this is normal. I refuse to let her future be stolen by the greed of a few. And I refuse to stay silent while my community does these things.
I want to say good night to all the members of this community who have come to present today for this development. You represent, well, unfortunately, you have represented our community. And right now, what I'm seeing is a disgrace. I've been here for twenty-three years. Obviously, I wanted to be a resident of this new park. But today, I feel a disgrace that you have been in political positions and have shown this corruption. We have an administrative administration that is promoting the hate, the division. Not only do we never have to be united as a community, supporting each other, and that's what I'm seeing with you. Right now, we're seeing how the rent is still going down. We're still paying more taxes. How are you planning on resoldifying it? I'm really doubting my expectations that I can someday have my own house. My salary is still the same. I have family members in my family who have problems with medical care. So, you guys, you guys, how are you representing our community? How are you planning on that? I, as a citizen, you guys work for us. You guys want to represent us and do the job. I don't say this with a suggestion of letting go of your jobs and letting go of your job. I say this with an obligation. It's your order that you let go of your jobs. You have the authority to do that. The authority to comment on this issue. I don't want to see you in a political position, never again. I want to see you in the prison, and you guys are in jail.
And again, what we're gonna do after these two speakers, uh, once you queue up, we're gonna continue with the speaker parts to make sure we have everybody or everyone gets an opportunity to speak. After these two señoritas, we're gonna continue with those who have filled out the ballots and we're gonna continue forward and give them all this opportunity.
Um, so, like many of the residents here, I agree with my colleagues today, I count them in this afternoon. I heard a lot of folks were talking about the standpoint of not enforcing the process and how they come to the meetings of this diligent decision. I find myself in that same position. And I unfortunately found out a lot of this, which was breaking news from every single news channel a day ago. And a coworker that knew all this and that, we had to do it. And so that's why I'm here. And first, I want to start off with, I don't have any of you, I don't have to know sort of form or any bad blood with anyone here. But I did come to just sort of hear and listen and see what was going on. And I think I'll start off with you, mayor. I was really disappointed by the PR statement you made at the very beginning of this, of this, how we opened this. I felt like the rhetoric I came from that is just the same rhetoric we hear of everything in general. Coming to this administration, which is fake news, it's politically driven, it's a bunch of people who are against us. And it really is so disappointing because it shows to me the lack of accountability that is coming to me. Um, secondly, the reason that I came here was because I saw a public notice that was supposed to about this, uh, for this conference waiver that was gonna be voted on today. And I wanted to make sure that I was gonna be in these votes that, um, going through. I just don't think, I think it's such a conflict of interest. I think if any individuals that were found that possibly could have been, um, participating in any of this type of behavior, should have their own, just like anybody else, buy a sound at work, do something, any thought or anything else. I would be yourself, so in my own attorney's seat, be able to prepare a government. And I think we cannot use the money of the taxpayers here to do that. And then also, um, I want to second just some of the, what some of the individuals that have already said in particular, form accounting on there. Or, um, I just have never been to a councilmember meeting where I've seen so many people who I could have supported on the team who are just saying that they do just don't need to do laws with the problems and the confidence and the bias of the residents in the city. And I just think I agree with former councilmen for that, we need different representation. And maybe we should be looking at a city coming to take over in the time being of all this is all being investigated. I just don't think that you all are making decisions about your friends and other family members who are also part of these great and disturbing ones that are suffering the cost. And then lastly, I just want to say the point five second that I have left. Um, I've never been ashamed to call myself the president of the city's member. My parents lived in Germany, and they were rich, raised two daughters. Both of them danced the Queen's music, and were so good to me, I would say. And I came back to the state, oh, I'm able to sustain me. And when people ask me, and both of them ask me, why don't you live in Orange County or somewhere else? I, I just feel like this is my home, but I can always shame when people ask me about the future.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, my name is Aina. I'm a lifelong resident of Huntington Park. I just want to make a comment about rent control. Today, rent control passed here in Huntington Park, the rule was full to maximum capacity of people displaying support for rent control. FYI. More than seventy percent of HP residents are renters, and this is a measure that our community needed. I am proud to say that I was here that day to give a public comment in support of rent control. I say this as a daughter of homeowners who also rents tenants, so I can stand for a ten. And let me say that my parents and I support rent control because we know that the cost of living will continue to go up and more people will end up on the streets if we don't have rent control. California rent policies are obviously not enough, or we wouldn't have so many people living on the streets across LA County, which we all see every day. Instead of being against rent control, which would, if we didn't have rent control, that would hurt the tenants. If I was a homeowner going through financial hardship, I would look at other places where our city money is going. And that brings us to the main concern of this meeting, which is the possible money laundering scheme that you guys might be involved in or police budget, because you guys know police get paid with a lot of money. Police officers are constantly coming, getting paid a lot. So like, you know, like, why, why are we not looking into like those other buckets of money instead of looking at? Like trying to take away a policy that would obviously affect like some of the most vulnerable businesses in our community.
Thank you for your comment.
Buenos dias. Good afternoon, everybody, and all the councilmembers. I am a resident of Huntington Park. Born and raised here, was born by immigrant Mexican parents here. I was very proud to be part of this community because as myself, I see myself here. I see a lot of people of color here, and I was very proud of them. And I am a very educated person. I attended the University of Southern California. I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the achievements that my parents have made to put me in that place. But because I'm there, I am now learning about democracy. And unfortunately, you have helped the community and you helped me. Because you have promised us to build a better future for our children. And if you live here, these also affect your children. They affect you. They affect future generations. Where is this money? You're telling me that one day or another, the money should go on? It just, nothing happened? And to follow that, you expect the community, the same community that you messed over, that you threw under the bus, to pay for your legal fees? You are the adults here, own up to that. Own up to that and pay other those from your own pockets. And you are clear, somebody else mentioned, you're here just looking at us like, yes, we understand. We see these same faces in our administration now. And we are here complaining about, oh, administration doesn't see us. And you're here doing the exact same thing. It is frustrating enough. How many people do need, need to come here and tell you to your face that you are no longer serving us? We do not want you here. How many residents, I mean, I'm trying to have a conversation. You are not serving us anymore. Come on, man. With the little dignity that you have left inside of you, stand up and be like, you know what? Yeah, I need to do something better. And we are not, you are not serving us. Just to give out the final minute, please stand up and walk away. Walk away. Leave us alone. You have done the same.
Second half, Rosa Maria to the microphone, followed by Rihanna Andrade, followed by Lorena Vega. Rosa Maria, Rihanna Andrade, and Lorena Vega. Is Rosa Maria here?
Hi, um, I've been here literally last minute. I was born and raised here in Huntington Park. And one thing I do want to say is I'm actually not surprised because three years ago, when I was a senior in New Park High School, I wrote two articles about this alleged corruption. But as a senior in high school, wrote two articles about that. And I remember reaching out to all the councilmembers and I asked them about that. And all they got was basically no comment. One thing I do remember, um, one thing I do remember was, um, I think Maryland saying like, oh, I won't say anything to a community resident or president. But it's like, I'm not surprised. Three years ago, there was a book that says, I'm terrific. And people were demanding an audit. And, um, an audit brings clarity in addresses, like where the finances are being spent. And it's like, why wasn't it done three years ago? Where is what, for any of this to came on the news? Why did I have to take the whole community to find out everything for this to finally start being addressed? Why wasn't it done years ago? Because it wasn't just me, it was also other people too. And, you know, like the previous, um, girl spoke, no one wants you here anymore. And, you know, it's like, this is a democracy. If the majority of the people don't want you as councilmembers, then why are you here? It's like, it doesn't make any sense at all. And, you know, I'm finally, like, really happy that the community is starting to find out about what's going on. Because it's a fact that like, I, not just me, but the fact that other people have been knowing about it for years and nothing was ever done. It's like, I'm finally glad everything's coming to light. And, you know, one more question I did have that I wrote on the paper was that even if you're found innocent from all of this, why is this, like, Soli Park so ruined? Like, why, this project that started in twenty nineteen, right? So it's like, what, almost six years later and nothing's been done? So, that's all I can say, really. I'm, that's all I can say.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes. No, she can mention what is happening, so I'm not, I'm not sure she's, she has to move on. But I want to apologize to her, because I, I've been abused by the, the power of Huntington Park. Because the police force of Huntington Park came over my house, so, like, one or two years ago, without any order that, that led to all the attacks on Huntington Park. That was the tank of war, that was the spark, that was all the police force of Huntington Park that was in my house. I was very abused all the time because I don't have my criminal record. They locked the door, they talked to me through the phone, all the people that were there. My uncle, no one, they were all armed. But the police forces of Huntington Park, in that time, because, yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little, they robbed things of my uncle. They stole, they stole the closet and they took the jerseys, the most valuable ones of the soldiers, of the troops, and dresses, the decibels, the, 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 the. Then, uh, in that time, I was very vulnerable and I didn't ask the city of Huntington Park. But I don't need the money. But I want to, I want the community to know that the police force of Huntington Park violated the rights of citizens and opened the door at all times and entered like they should have entered. I didn't have the money. My uncle, at that time, he was like ten years old, uh, he was sleeping, uh, he slept with shorts, very, because he was tired of the heat. So they took him, they put him in the bed, and he had to cover himself. No, they took him, they took him, they took him, they put him in a coffin, and there he was. I said, "Suelta, because I don't need it." So, uh, the politicians, the persons that represent here, they have a, uh, a destiny, of people decent, of people that represent here, but now it seems that the things aren't what they are. And, well, I, I want to say that the citizens of Huntington Park, you guys, the police force, they don't have an order of a judge to enter their houses, that they don't do. That they don't do, because then they don't have the power to represent those persons innocuous. What do you think? To me, nobody could support me because I, in that time, I didn't know how to explain to the community why they entered and violated the rights of my house. But now, yeah, now it's, it's, I didn't find anything, nothing. I said, "Who are you? What happened?" And I was like, "What?"
Thank you for your commentary. We'll finish this at the end. Rosa Maria, followed by Alma Cristina, followed by Jose Escamilla. Again, this was a final call for the last, uh, meeting that this step up. Rosa Maria, Alma Cristina, Maria Lopez, Luz Lopez, Victor Medina. Victor Medina. Señor Victor? Yes. Uh, Christie, uh, would you like to queue up here at the phone wall? And we can actually get started while Mr. Victor makes his way. Yes.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us speak. Thank you to the media for covering this, so everybody knows what's going on. Um, my parents bought a house in Huntington Park when I was sixteen, four. And I've lived here my whole life. Um, as far as the pool issue, um, we did construction at our house. And we had to come down to the planning and building conditions, pay for permits, pay for soil testing, before we could do anything to build our house. So I don't know how you could plan a pool, multi-million dollar thing, without giving a soil test to work. Also, from what I recall, there was a mass exodus of some pretty good police officers at one time because there were some moves made where they, they got rid of some provisions to relocate the funds for the pool. So there was a big mess in that. And one last thing is, if you guys do vote to pay the lawyer to represent yourself, I can guarantee that none of you guys will ever be here anymore.
Thank you for your comment. On final call, so this is final call for public comment. If you would like to make public comment, uh, we'll take two at a time and then we'll allow a few more to make their way up. Uh, this is the last, the last, the last opportunity to give a commentary on public. Vamos a tomar dos personas al tiempo pa, pa no tener tanta gente parada aquí en, at the front. Last opportunity, commentary on public, yes. Yeah, see, no one else. Say, no, please, say, no, we don't have anyone else for us, uh, at this moment.
I wanna say that it's kind of pathetic that every time that Huntington Park comes out of New York, it's always something that really means back. Makes all of us look me back and you guys should be representing us. And at least make it a little easier. Um, I think it's kind of pathetic that you guys tore down everything, it's only part of a big chunk of it and then we have to get fenced off. And I know you guys would hate to get that fence re, um, replaced. Because people will tag on it all the time and then every now and then there will be no to me. So if you guys have the money to do that, why couldn't you guys build anything or even create space there? Um, I also saw the news that Ms. Correón Cias said that in Huntington Park, we need more green space. But about five, six years ago, you guys tore down that whole area and decided to spend the money to not build a, a pool, a pool, Correón Cias. Um, I'm sorry. But, uh, if you think we need more green space, don't you think in these past six years, we should have had some green space in that area that we just had fenced off? That people would have to walk around, who would know the traction? That you guys spent money to clean up all the time? Um, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty pathetic. We should have a nice space for all of us. People like the park, people go to the park. And it's just so sad to see that there was just all this potential there. And instead of using it to full potential, you guys prefer to just leave a big lot of dirt in that area for none of us to use. Um, you could have been doing a lot with that space in the past six years and you guys just leave it empty. Um, I also think that we should have that cop robot over there. Uh, I think you guys lack, but it's, we, I know we spent a lot of money on that cop robot and it doesn't do anything. The last time we came on the news, we, people talked about that robot just seeming a sub. Um, what, it isn't doing anything. It doesn't, it only controls in front of the basketball court, it's all used there. Why are we spending that money? Why are we spending all this money and paying so much taxes to not have a fully working park? We, I, I think the future generations, I think the children deserve a park. I think they deserve a playground. I think we deserve a playground. I think we deserve a nice park. I mean, we're running a park. It's in the name. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I just think it's, it's really sad that we all just show up and when, when something bad happens, when we should be celebrating, we, we should be celebrating our city. You guys should be making our city look nice and proud. We should be appearing on the news doing great things, but we don't and it's really tragic.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Thank you.
My name is Marlon Rodriguez. I'm the daughter of Mr. Cusielson, who's been here for a period of like, I'm part of the next generation that wants to stay here. I want to stay pride in being from here. And at this point, it's at a time where the administration were under, there was a basic erasure of communities that looked like this. This is a point where it, there's so many... More than anything, when you're sitting up here with so much privilege, to be like, you are representing the city that is so belittled at this time. And to sit up there doodling whatever you're doing and just sitting up there and... How many people been here or young people that have come here and said, I have to speak for my parents because they fear you. They fear you, they don't trust you. The privilege you have to just sit there while your own residents are scared to approach you, have this conversation with you. At a point where communities such as this are being erased and looked at as nothing in this country, it's unbelievable for them anyway. And what are you showing to people that wanna stay here? People like me, I take so much pride in being this officer. And it's moments like this where it makes people of my age and my generation say, where do I go? Where do I wanna go? Where do I feel safe? Where do I feel seen? Where do I feel heard by the people that apparently wanna take care of us and wanna look out for us?
Thank you. For the last call for public comment, Madam Mayor, uh, hope that, I'll turn it over to you.
So with no more public comment, I will first public comment, I can sign a lot of comments coming to play for the comments. Um, most of the comments were obviously on the items we will be discussing today. There was public comments regarding the red civilization. Uh, for those that have any further comments or suggestions for any future changes and the council might consider, uh, Mr. Settling of Council, if he can come and raise his hand so that you can talk to him. If he can go, this is your, hi, Son. Just wanna make sure that you check in with him. So, Mr. Settling of Council, for those that are, that have any comments on the red civilization, I wanna make sure that you check in with him so that he can get your comments and it will be, obviously, a process whether it be according to registration or anything else. I wanna make sure that they are pressed by him as he's taking care of, uh, he's taking the lead on that particular case. Um, with that, I do wanna go, there is no more session, uh, so...
I have a, I have a question, Madam Mayor. Uh, to the city manager, uh, I believe one of the residents had asked, um, why the, uh, former councilman Castillo was removed from his seat? Yeah, is there anyone to answer that question?
Uh, Vice Mayor, through my investigation, we saw that Ms. Castillo, uh, presidency or constitution is safe. Therefore, by Operation Law, Ms. Castillo.
Do we know what station you live in?
Castillo was living in South Carolina.
The investigation is not done yet. So for that, um, we go to consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'm motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
The first is second, question for comments. See that for all of us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmember Sanabia.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Macias.
Yes, motion carries as we get into consent calendar. We move on to the special agenda of the item one, state council, special act of possible action regarding the district investigation. Since we had a broad, wide, separate, including consideration of people matters related to the investigation. And there are three recommendations for the council. Uh, at this time, I would like to make a recommendation and say that I will vote to approve item one, but I do want to, uh, take item two to include separately.
Madam Mayor, before you enter the motion, you also want to note that today, earlier I, I distributed to the council and to the agencies or an email that was sent to my office from Deputy District Attorney Stephen Burden. And I may read it quickly. Dear Mr. Glassman, thank you for your cooperation this week, for all your cooperation this week. In our brief conversation you mentioned to the council, we're willing to waive attorney-client privileges as it relates to the subject matter of our investigation. City is about to be saved, they wish to assist in our investigation by permitting us to review the relevant privileges material seized through warrants to ensure that we expect this investigation. If the, uh, if the council could prioritize this issue, it would be great. We should make a, a great, great weekend.
I can provide a motion to...
I'd like to provide a supplemental motion to that, on item one. Um, I'm trying to, for, for evidence. If you accept me.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
My, my motion would be, so I'm providing a supplemental motion. So my motion would be, uh, to waive attorney, uh, client privileges to facilitate cooperation with all matters pertaining to the investigation regarding the Salt Lake Aquatic Center. Uh, and it's my belief, and just to clarify, that that investigation is titled Efren Martinez. Uh, for the district attorney, his office, for the federal bureau of investigation, and any other investigative agency at the local, state, and federal level, and any investigation that may, that may be related to that investigation. So that's my motion.
I second the motion.
You're providing your motion. The other two items have been taken separately.
The two items have taken separately just for clarification. And I think that so public is made aware, um, is that it's not just gonna be with the DA, it's any other authoritative body that wants to come in and see what's going on. They should and we should waive all, um, attorney-client privileges in that manner.
I, I can restate my motion if you guys would be able to. Yeah, so the motion was to waive attorney-client privilege to facilitate cooperation with all matters pertaining to the investigation regarding the Salt Lake Aquatic Center. It's my belief to clarify that that investigation is titled Efren Martinez. And this is for the district attorney's office, for the federal bureau of investigation, and any other investigative agency at the local, state, and federal level, and any investigations that may be related to that investigation.
I have a person second for the, um, first, uh, first item with the supplemental motion and item two, two, item two, please, will be taken separately.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmember Sanabia.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Macias.
Yes. So we move on to, um, take the items two and take separately. So item two is the litigation of investigative authority, consideration of technical investigative authority to the prosecutor, um, we have this.
And, and just for those in the audience, uh, city manager, can we, can we talk about these two items so that it's like, kind of made aware, what is going on, what are the procedures? Um, so that way it's clear for everybody, it is true.
Well, let's start with item two first.
Yeah, item two first, yeah.
Uh, yes, councilmember Sanabia, Vice Mayor, the, uh, just to provide some background for those in the audience, uh, item number two is the allegation of the federal authority consideration attorney over the investigation authority to the city prosecutor office. Uh, on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, the extension of the county district attorney's office executing search warrants, eleven locations, including Huntington Park, City Hall, city public courts, and multiple residences and businesses associated with the Salt Lake Park Aquatic Center project. Investigation title Operation Dirty Pond is focused on the potential misuse of millions of dollars publicly allocated for the aquatic center's construction. City council will discuss the above listed legal matters and determine appropriate next steps to ensure transparency, accountability, and cooperation with authorities. And, uh, I do wanna commend the council for kicking up, for taking up these items to make a concession on this matter. And, uh, I do wanna let the council know that Mr. Bill Lefecat from the city prosecutor's office is here to speak once again.
Okay, I do have a question as to why isn't that we're not using our current city attorney to lead on this, um, this investigation?
Can I, uh, can I ask questions around that? And thank you so much, I appreciate you having me, I'll be very pleased. Um, it was, it was just asked right now whether or not we would plead, keep, uh, our, uh, our hope, uh, Alvarez Glassman on this investigation and whether or not... So this is what I, this is really what I want. I want us to like dumb it down tonight. I'm not that smart when it comes to legalese. I, I have my degrees and other stuff, right? So I think that tonight, this next motion is, why would we go with another attorney or another legal body, uh, instead of the city attorney? That is what is at hand in item number two, correct?
That's correct.
Awesome. Okay, uh, I have a question for the city attorney. City attorney, have you ever provided any amount of dollars to any of the individuals that were investigated, uh, during the operation Dirty Pond?
Madam Mayor, I don't see any relevancy to that, but it's, I, you can answer. The answer is, uh, the individuals? No.
But any, would you have appeared on any one seven hundred form for, uh, payment or however you wanna phrase it, for over a hundred thousand dollars for any of the individuals that were named in the, uh, in the investigation?
I haven't looked at the seven hundred forms, but if I may, if I may be clueless, I'd say, um, probably so.
Okay, so I have a copy here that I'm gonna introduce.
Let's not say something, Madam Mayor. I'm not objecting to...
I, I understand.
You know, Mr. Lefecat, for many years, we had a conversation earlier. I don't wanna be the focus of this conversation.
I, I understand, I understand.
And so, councilmember, I'm, I'm asking for you to, uh, be respectful to my position, the years I've served since.
Okay. So I am, I am trying to be clear. The reason why I bring this up is because there was a question asked by the mayor regarding if we should keep the city attorney on this case. I have a seven hundred form, which is what we fill out to say, hey, what, what could be a conflict of interest whenever we're in elected office? I have a seven hundred form that was filled out by Efren Martinez, uh, when he was running for, uh, California State Assembly District Fifty-seven, that does clearly state that some form of financial transactions of over a hundred thousand dollars, um, occur. So because of that, I, I do appreciate, and, and, and again, I, I have copies, if you all wanna see them, I have copies for all and the city... For the record, uh, that, I, please? Uh, for the record, because I wanna be, be sure that the reason why we should move it away from the city attorney is because I want no conflict of interest whatsoever. We need transparency, which is why I asked for this to be printed and for this to be brought. Uh, because we need transparency and, and that is why, uh, what you're gonna hear today, why we might be switching, it's important to know why we cannot continue with business as usual.
So just to, to echo, uh, some of the concerns of my colleague, uh, councilmember Jonathan Sanabia, I also, uh, share that concern. Um, I would say that I'm not sure what the amount is, but I do know that usually when you come on the seven hundred forms, it's anything over ten thousand dollars. But the council member is right, uh, Alvarez and Colvin at law do show up on the seven hundred forms of Mr. Efren Martinez, uh, which would lead us to believe that at some point, uh, our city attorney, uh, was paying this individual or is his client or, or whatnot. So, um, I would say that, um, it, it's very clear and apparent that we cannot have our city attorney, uh, take lead or be involved, uh, in this process for this time.
My question was a point there and I wanna apologize to the city attorney because the time that he's been here, he has provided his service to the community and his service to the city without any, that there's implications of being, uh, said today. And I wanna apologize, because this question is a truly big question and I wanna apologize for that because, um, this has nothing to do with that. My question was more on procedure and reasons and why you want to listen to attorney because we are obligated to attorneys. So I just wanted to know, what about that possibility? Is there contract for this? Is it, is it all under this contract? That, that was more of my question.
And I may, for the, uh, as indicated in the, in the email you presented earlier, I have been fully cooperating with the district attorney's office throughout this process. And I'm speaking with him, I'm saying this is, I know Mr. Lipbeck. Working with other jurisdictions, I think he's a reputable attorney, I know he's a reputable attorney, and he's, I'm not, I'm not understanding the way, trust me, so.
That's all I, I needed to add.
I'm happy to answer any questions, but I do wanna clarify something, um, we've been working with the city, behind the park, in the role of city prosecutor, I believe over thirty years, and our job is very different than the city attorney. Our primary job is to report, say, law, whether maybe in criminal context or civil context, and make sure that your community is safe, uh, that we are really known as community preservation lady. Uh, in the course of, of our job, we, we obviously look at a lot of different things, and I do analysis, um, in terms of this particular project, uh, it is, uh, obviously a different one, because we were had no involvement involved, and we have no agenda, one item to the other, regarding the, 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 and the, and the. And with the conclusion, we will make recommendations, uh, using our independent judgment, uh, unaffected by the city council, or any member of staff, uh, and make recommendations to take the appropriate action, and liaison with the agencies that have shown an interest in this issue. And ultimately, to, to clarify what, what the facts are, and I appreciate that, uh, the city council, as indicated, will not guard, um, in terms of contract, if you have a contract, um, this is going to be a supplement to that contract, that I can use for the next session to clarify the jurisdiction that we have. Um, although we have broad jurisdiction at this point, um, since you are parsing some city, uh, attorney authority to us, we just wanna make sure that everything's done correctly. Um, uh, under capital law, we do have the same legal power standing as the city attorney, it's just that our, uh, record file, you know, is, is looking differently. Did you have any other questions?
So I move to delegate, uh, investigative authority, uh, to our city prosecutor on behalf of the city.
I second.
Okay, person second, any further questions or comments? City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanabia.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Masias.
Yes, motion carries, move on to, uh, item three, we will have the waiver, consideration of the waiver, allowing attorney, and the waiver to represent, City Manager, ladies and councilmembers, and, and, and.
If you have a question for the, since I'm just, I have to decide, do I need to repeat?
Yes, uh, before this item is discussed, Mr. Councilmember Martinez and myself would have to step away from the chamber, and, uh, I do wanna introduce Mr. Andrew Sarega, who's here today, or tonight, to help answer any questions. So at this time, you will step back.
Uh, is there any, uh, initial conversation on this particular item?
Yeah, attorney, I'm just, uh, can you kind of explain what's going on in this, can you put it in a label structure, then, it's all legalese, um, ESO.
Um, so this is a request for a waiver of conflict of representation. I have been engaged by the city as special counsel to an unrelated matter, or a matter not related to the investigation being conducted by the district attorney, or any other potential law enforcement agencies. As such, the city is currently my client in that capacity. However, a request is to make that the city waive conflict, and allow me to represent both councilmember Martinez, and City Manager Reyes, in the investigation in which the DA is involved regarding the aquatic center. Now, I heard several comments from the public related to payment of that representation or defense. I want to be very clear, the city is not voting tonight to make any payments, to enter into any contract, in which the city would be responsible to pay any legal fees, in the representation and defense of councilmember Martinez, and City Manager Reyes. They would both be responsible to burden the cost of that representation in their personal capacities onto themselves. So I, I understand the, uh, consternation or concern from the public, however, I would like to point out that that was, uh, they might have been misinformed, that is not the case, the city is not expending any funds, as it relates to the, the defense of councilmember Martinez, and City Manager Reyes. So I wanted to make that point very clear.
So, to be clear, um, this, this would, this was just a, a way, because there was a different investigation you're working on for the city, this is more so that you are gonna represent these two individuals in their own private matter, but the city is not, we're not paying for any of it.
Correct, and, and if I can give, uh, an example, um, the reason for this waiver, and a written document will follow for the decision to execute, is that at some point in the future, there might come a situation where the matter in which I am investigating separately for the city, would come into conflict with my representation of councilmember Martinez, and City Manager Reyes. Should that become a reality, the law is very clear on what situations a legal representative would have to withdraw from representation of clients, and in this case, the representation being withdrawn would be that from councilmember Martinez, and City Manager Reyes. As the city is my primary client in all matters related, so, should that be required by law at a future date, I will certainly withdraw my representation, according to, you know, the professionals of conduct established in the state of California. And continue my representation of the city in this special matter until its termination or conclusion. So I wanted to also make that very clear, that the city is the primary client in this situation.
To put it in other words, just for my clarification, and clarification of others, is you are saying that in the future, based off of what's the law right now, that if at any point there becomes a conflict between the representation of these two individuals and the city, you would fall back on the representation of the city over the two individuals?
And, and that's to clarify, that's if required.
Yes, if required, I said, yes, if required.
If not, the city is waiving that potential conflict, allowing me to represent these two individuals?
No, 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 no.
No way.
No. They're a different attorney. Different attorney.
That's only common, I, I, I understand, but my motions are high, I just wanna ask everybody just on that little bit, either.
No, they're all right.
I understand, we're in the middle of the conversation.
Uh, so, I, Mr. Sarega, I think you, you got ahead of me, but I think that was one of the primary concerns that I had, um, I think, um, the public has seen that, uh, the stuff that's been happening in the city, there's usually, um, one individual that ends up always being, uh, you know, at the forefront of, you know, mentioned. Um, and so, that was my concern, is that at some point, if what you were initially investigating ends up being tied to that individual, or that group of individuals, um, what would happen? And I think you answered that question masterfully, that you would remove yourself. Um, we did have a lot of residents that came here tonight, uh, under the impression that the city was gonna pay, uh, some sort of, of money to defend the, you know, councilmember Martinez, and, and City Manager Ricardo Reyes. Um, and I think just to make it very clear, we are not supporting, uh, like, I mean, the city is not spending that one dollar, right? And now we're not approving not one dollar, not one cent, on the defense of, of Mr. Ricardo, of City Manager Ricardo Reyes, or Councilmember Alfred Martinez, I just wanna make sure that we clarify that on record.
As for me, I'm, I'm very opposed to this, I, I see a very clear conflict of interest, I'm concerned, um, that I'm really gonna vote on something that's really conflict of interest. Um, I don't feel comfortable with that, because you lose the hard part of another investigation that was started, you know, by the city manager, I mean, it's very convoluted. Um, and we're talking transparency, but this right here, as we're bringing it, obviously in a public setting, and talking about it, that's transparency, but I'm concerned of how convoluted it can get, because it'll open support to possibly not quite the city, right? You know, we're not saying, uh, but it's, it's concerning, especially when, you know, you have obviously the same attorney within the investigation, considering Councilwoman, she gets removed, there's questionable legal advice, that I still have a lot of questions about how this has started. Uh, the investigation for Councilwoman Casilla is still in the middle of it, it hasn't been, um, determined, or terminated, or, you know, there's still any conclusion to that investigation. So all of that, in the middle of obviously having this investigation with the DA, to have an attorney to waive conflict, I just don't feel comfortable with that. The DA should be investigating this, too.
Yes, but not a future.
Uh, can I talk order, uh, of the order of the day, when we keep, like, what you can tell us, and I think.
At this moment, I'm meeting, at this moment, I'm meeting the diets, cause I'm gonna vote in this.
So, uh, what's your suggestion?
The city is hearing the vote.
Mary, I think you have the, you, you should have the room.
We're gonna vote.
No, no, I'm just wondering, if she got, I could, I could take over for, as chair, she's gonna.
No, you can't have a quorum.
You know, the red, I take over.
She needs, you don't have a quorum to make a vote. You know what this whole council needs?
Please, if we can leave it.
I'm leaving, it's okay, cause this city attorney is a fake and a fraud, and paid a lot of money. This guy here is super made up, he represents Trump and all of them, and this guy's a former council member, ran in Anaheim, and got voted out. We're meeting the diets, you don't have a quorum, and city clerk, clarifying.
Go back to O C.
You know your fish. You know that, and you let them go, and I'm leaving, thank you.
We're not motion, we're starting with discussion. You know, if we were on team two.
The last, I think the last, I don't know, city attorney.
At this point, Madam Mayor, members of the council, at this point, the item's under agenda, don't leave, there's been a motion made.
There's a question, and then the mayor left the diet, lost.
Currently have three members out of the four members that you have, and so, at this point, there's a motion, is that?
No one motioned any, I called for an order to, uh, for the call, the order of the day, the reason I did that was because we were talking about other things, and if we really wanted to, we can, we can, we can then ask questions about who, uh, who represented who, um, in their investigations. That could be a question, right, like, is there anyone here that, that has represented anyone up here before on an investigation in a personal matter with the DA? I can say I haven't.
I haven't either.
Hmm, interesting, interesting, okay.
Do you watch it, huh?
So, so this is, this is, this is, this is what I, I've heard concerns about, like, the payment, things like that, that, checking, or serious stuff. There.
In general.
I, I, we're publicly, we're, we're having a discussion up here, you know, so, um.
But we're not allowed to comment what you're saying.
Public comment is closed.
Uh, but this was not talked about, or it's coming up.
I understand, I understand, this is a discussion.
Public comment is closed, babe.
I understand, tensions are high, because it's closed, I just wanna, I just wanna spend your time here, the council members, so that we can have further discussion, so that we can have a motion.
The payers.
Is there any further discussion?
Is there anything else, Chad?
Uh, in this situation, I think I've been very clear, you know, what the council would be asked to consider, uh, what the consequences of that decision would be, and ultimately, to, one more time, very clearly state that this is not in any way a, a payment, uh, or contract for the defense, in the investigation put on by the district attorney of councilmember Martinez, or City Manager Reyes.
I mean, it's, it's clear to me, um, that we're not being anything, I don't see anything out here that says, we're entering a contract with you, is that correct?
Correct.
Does the city, this is, and then, at the end of the day, there's laws that already protect the city, for whenever, um, if there, a conflict were to arise, and who you would have to settle, correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, I'm motion for the approval of the conflict of waiver.
Uh, Mr. Sarega, it, it's my belief that it, it's probably not gonna take long for that end of conflict to come, so I ask that, as soon as that does happen, if, if it does, I think it's a matter of when, not if, that you really afford, uh, conflict, and, and, conflict, I'll second that.
Hit the road, Jack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanabia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Sanabia. I'm sorry, Mayor Masias, I apologize.
Can we get, uh?
Yes, we can ask for, uh, Vice, uh, Councilmember Martinez, and.
And give it into ready.
Vice, so turn to the. Thank you.
Are we gonna open public comment again?
Yes.
This time, public comment is closed, so now, we're at the end of the agenda, and, uh, did you hear me, so I have the special agenda, and we'll, uh, wait for the council to, yes.
Point, point of, point of correction, the motion did appear.
Oh, sorry. Well, that's not good.
Your petition going.
Point of, point of correction, the city manager, or please move to open up our public comment again, with the majority of the vote here, because I think there might be some individuals that got here a little bit late, I know some of you guys work, you guys are hard workers, and might not got a chance to say public comment, so just a point of, uh, I guess, is, is there a patient, I'm asking, can the council reopen public comment, and we saw this, do you, do you need a motion for that?
Uh, yeah, during the council, we're just trying to, we're giving, also, those, really communications that need to be turned on, that doesn't have that opportunity.
So I'd like to, uh, motion that we reopen up, uh, public comment, I do wanna ask the audience that their, uh, item with, uh, Councilmember Martinez and Jorge, uh, obviously, you know, they're not gonna be discussing it, so if you guys do just talk about it, uh, they don't have to be, because that's already happened. Um, so I, I motion that we open up public comments for the individuals that didn't get a chance to talk, and to be able to share their thoughts, uh, on, on what's been happening in the city.
All right, second.
Okay, have a person second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sanabia.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Yes.
And Mayor Masias.
Yes, okay, uh, I will now open public comments, for anybody, anyone who's.
We asked that, we, yes, uh, about.